All right, close special meeting of the fire commissioner to make first order. Y'all join me in the pledge.
Go to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, in this whole liberty and justice.
All right, short agenda tonight, probably a long meeting, so we'll see how it goes. First item on the agenda is a presentation called ladder truck proposal by Greenwood Emergency Vehicles. And that would be for E1 ladder truck. We have Mike here from Greenwood. And he's gonna give us a little presentation and tell us all about his truck and how much it's gonna cost and all the goodies.
All right, thank you very much for the opportunity. Glad you brought a few people here.
We'll see.
We'll find out at the end of the. I'll do a brief introduction while passing out the materials here. My name is Mike McCoo, I was from Greenwood Fire. Emergency vehicles, I'm a fire apparatus salesman. Greenwood main office is located in North Attleboro, Massachusetts. We have locations Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut. We cover from the New York border to the tip of Maine. All of New Hampshire, most of Vermont. And I am very happy to be here tonight to present. We have a particular truck. It's a lot of paper here, sorry, that we have on order that's coming in, which is what I've been talking about. With Assistant Chief Ebenus Guy and with Commissioner Ingram. And so I have specific material, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the computer in because we were. In planning this, we weren't sure we were gonna have PowerPoint available. So I took the PowerPoint presentation and crushed it into a paper presentation and printed a bunch of copies. Hopefully we can, we'll have a, can I skip you for now for passing around? So we'll have a couple left for passing around.
Can you just make sure that Chief Ebenus could down here this one?
Uh, yes. Um, so this is an equipment list. And. All right, so that was the last of this, uh, let me, sorry, let me take this down. I'll run through this presentation, take questions, I've got a notebook, I'll try to get whatever we need. So for those who have the packet in front of them, I'll just go through it quickly, I'm gonna leave everybody else just sort of wondering what you're looking at. The truck that you see on the cover, that is the plan that I've already sent to a couple of the people involved here. That is the truck that we ordered. There's, I'll talk a little bit more about demo trucks further along in this. But that truck is already in the production timeline. That truck is due to be shipped from the factory, the end of June, beginning of July of 2025, so. The end of this coming fiscal year, that truck should be shipping up from the factory from Florida. To Greenwood and North Attleboro for final fitting. Of course, final fitting can be very short or very long, depending on what else is getting added to the truck. Some people think the truck exactly as it's specced. And they do fitting radios, equipment mounting on their own, some want it all done as part of the package. There's a lot of, lot of options there. This particular truck. Is pretty well equipped, there is, an equipment list was passed out. And I have some highlights in the presentation of how this truck is equipped. Just get to. It is, uh, it is a L9 Cummins 450 horse, it is a 1500 GPM pump. A hundred foot ladder, single axle. For just sort of the basics, 470 gallon water tank. I highlighted in the presentation, there are some color pictures that are from the E1 website. And so you can duplicate all this information looking on the E1 website. It's called the Metro 100 Quint. And. There are some highlights of different features, 750 pound tip load.
Is that wet or dry?
Uh, well, so 750 can be wet depending on some angles and stuff, there's a whole series of. Angles, you know, it changes with wind, it changes with ice and all that stuff, but that is 750. I'd have to look at the, 750 is wet at certain angles. The. Uh, in this. We selected when we put the order in the truck for what's called a pinned waterway. And what that means is at partial extension, you can lock the waterway so it doesn't extend fully with the tip of the ladder. The idea being is you don't want it in the way if you're doing over a window sill rescue. Or over a roof parapet, you wanna be able to get the ladder on the parapet and not have the nozzle underneath in your way. So you can actually hold the nozzle back as you stretch the ladder out. And the nozzle does not telescope all the way with the ladder that holds back. That seems to be an option that most of our customers pick. When they're ordering, so we figured we should just put it into the order because it is popular. And if you do it without it, obviously it's hard to go back and, you know, undo that. And NFA requirements for the cab strength were exceeding, were more than five times first roof load requirement and more than twice the requirement of NFA for frontal impact. Welded extrudium for the ladder. Doesn't need painting, you know, there are various theories, some people like a steel ladder, some people like painted more. This is what E1 feels is the right solution, never needs, uh, never needs to be painted and. Is. Essentially designed and coated, the aluminum is coated to make it essentially magnets free of very low thickness. 2.5 to 1 structural safety factor on the ladder. This particular truck has the 20 inch extended front bumper option selected in it, it's got a 14 inch deep tray in the front. Or. Or line in the front bumper with a cover. One of the big things with the truck and that we feel is a, is a big. Feature particularly in New England is that the. Uh, E1 builds the torque box essentially integral to the frame of the truck. The entire frame, torque box and superstructure that the ladder mounts on is galvanized before the truck is built. Then it's primed, then it's painted, so we have the galvanized, then primed, then painted. For the frame and superstructure for the, uh, for the ladder.
Frame is a 50 year warranty?
Uh. I have to look because there's varying warranties on different, the. The ladder's 20 year, 100,000 mile, mile structural. I can't remember what the cutoff is, but I can answer the question for you, I just. And actually, it's in the back of the equipment list, I think all the warranties are listed on the last page of the equipment list.
Frame rails are 50 year warranty. For 250,000 miles. Is that your question?
It was, let me see the body warranty. Thank you.
Thank you for looking that up for me. Available with hail watchers, this one is spec with a hail pump, so it's already, you know. That's already sort of built into the assembly line, planning and the pricing and engineering.
And that was a 1500 GPM?
That is a 1500, yes. Um, jack spread on this, obviously there are different configurations in the different brands. The jack configuration for this is the scissor jack instead of an H shaped jack, so it's a lower jack that comes out at an angle. And it's a fairly narrow, um, jack spread pattern, it's 11 foot side to side pattern total. Um, and obviously there are variations, uh, and it is for scissor jacks. So it is intended to be able to fit in a typical one lane street. And, um, you know. Obviously, if the, if you have a one-way street and you have 11 feet. A lot of times we can get as much as 11 feet in a single lane street, or a one lane with harking. Um, either you can squeeze out 11 feet. Or sometimes obviously we have to jack between cars or whatever, but this. Is intended to be able to be stable, fully functional at all ranges and not have to short jack. That's the intent of that design.
Is short jacking a possibility, not a possibility with this design?
Um, short jacking is a possibility, but of course you, uh, I'm trying to, so. We have a lot of different aerials, but I believe this one will not fly any of the short jack side. And I can check on that.
I'll check on the short jack restrictions.
You don't want to fly on the short jack side anyway.
Well, of course. Some trucks, depending on what you're short jacked, you can swing a certain amount or a certain angle. Um, but I don't know, I, I'll have to look this one up. And. This has a couple of different options, if you're looking on the website, you'll see that you can do cross lays a couple of different ways. Newtown's truck, for those of you who've looked at it, the Sandy Hook truck, it has the cross lays in the front bumper. This truck is not set up this way, this is what's called a side stacker, they're in a more traditional location above the pump panel. Um, just what you would kind of expect for cross lays. Um, that Newtown, Sandy Hook had selected the front bumper cross leg.
Does this truck have anything allocated for the front bumper?
Uh, it has the tray in the front bumper, the 14 inch deep tray with a cover for aligned hill with the front bumper.
Okay, so it is piped for.
I believe it is piped and I'll check that also.
I thought that was a front suction. And Mike, well.
Uh, I think it's bold, I think it's a suction which is over on the officer's side and then the tray, I believe, is piped for discharge. That's out of my list of questions. All right, uh, then, um, the last feature from the highlights here that I'll point out, uh, electric over hydraulic. They call it the advanced aerial control system, pretty much what everybody is doing now where you have an electric over hydraulic system. There are overrides. Uh, and backups, and there is also the possibility to go with more manual hydraulic controls. I don't know if we're too late in the process on this truck to be able to select those, we might not be able to. Because they, when they put things in the production line, all the engineering is complete. Certainly if that's something you want to talk about, any questions you have, I'll take back and I'll try. But I think that's probably not an option if you're considering that. And then, uh, after you get through the highlights, there are some pictures, unfortunately, the top picture came out a little grainy. Uh, when I transferred it, that's a picture, that happens to be a Pierce Ascendant on the left side. And on the right side is the, um. The E1, the H. Uh, the Metro 100, sorry. Uh, showing the difference in the jack configuration, the scissors versus the H jack and the width of the jack spread. The lower picture is, um, duplicating the same. Uh, aerial scenario, um, with the, uh, Pierce truck and with the E1 truck. And if you notice, if you look carefully, well, you can see pretty easily the back wheels and the back jacks on the Pierce are off the ground. And that is the, if you look in the Pierce. Diagram, there are a couple of no-fly areas on the Pierce. Uh, 10 o'clock, basically 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock forward on the ladder down below a certain angle. And, uh, the way that they overcome that no-fly angle is you can add ballast to the truck and then you can fly in that area. The, and the difference is the jacks on the E1 are forward of the pump. Which moves the, uh, jack stability forward. And puts center of gravity a little further behind the jacks. And, um, the jacks on the Pierce, and this happens to be a tandem axle, but it is the same configuration on the single axle. Um, the Pierce has the jacks behind. The pump panel, so the center of gravity is different. Um, and there are certainly things in that truck that are great features too, they're both good trucks. Um, and I'm sure if you're meeting with their sales rep, they're gonna tell you what's wrong with the truck, I'm showing you this, their job, you know. I don't, I don't think there's a lot of secrets in how this, you know, how this works. And we're, you know, we're gonna elaborate on the things that we feel, you know, made our truck. The truck that we hope you will want to pick. Um, so let's talk a little bit about demos. I am, back to the introduction for a moment, I am a 40 plus year fire service person myself. I started in the days of Hans and American Lafrances and, um. I've been on a lot of truck committees and I also have driven and I've been in departments that had to pick up a demo because that was the only option they had at the time. Or it was available, or they didn't have the money to custom order. Demo trucks of the old days were not always the most desirable trucks, they were built. They were specced somewhat inexpensively and they were designed to be run down the road and go shows. And, uh, for years in my career fire service, I drove a truck that had been a demo. And, um, it happened to be an E1 from the 90s and we weren't all that crazy about the truck. It was specced wrong and it wasn't equipped well and. That is the demo of the past, these trucks now are not done that way, these trucks are specifically designed in the way we think will sell. We, we equip them and we feature them and we risk the money when we put the order up. To equip them in a way that we think is gonna sell, based on what are our customers ordering. We have a lot of experience where, uh, Greenwood has existed since 1979. And we have thousands of trucks in the region out there. We sell between ambulances and fire trucks, we, we deliver about 90. This past year was 91 units, the year previous was 92 units, so we have a lot of experience with what people are ordering. And what we want is we want this truck to be appealing enough that before it actually lands in our parking lot, we have to pay E1 the rest of the money for it. Could we put some in? They build it and when they deliver it to us, we have to pay the rest of it. Before we pay that money, we want it to be sold, we want it to be under contract to somebody. So that it doesn't come out of Greenwood's dealership money, obviously, to pay for the truck, so we wanna make it appealing. We equip it the way it's, everything is big blocks, everything is galvanized, everything has all the extra undercoating. Because we're selling to New England departments, we have a ton of coastline departments. We've got trucks on Block Island, we've got trucks on Man Tucket. Trying to get a couple of trucks onto Martha's Vineyard right now. Um, so we're building trucks that we believe people in New England want, everyone who works for Greenwood is also a firefighter somewhere. So. Um, that's, you know, that's how we put this, the ideas of this together, that's how we make something that is not the old. Really hated demo trucks from like the 1990s, which is not doing that right. Um, just a few of the high points, the spec page, the specs are 33 pages, there's no way I'd wanna read them or you would wanna listen to me go through the whole 33 pages. So I'll just pick out some highlights, as I said before. Cummins 450 horse engine, hail 1500 pump. UPF 470 gallon tank, 24,000 front, 35,000 rear axle. Alco aluminum wheels, stability control, 20 inch bumper with 14 inch deep tray. Six person cab, smart dock SCBA brackets on the seats that have our SCBA cable. Um, air conditioning. Over the wheel wells on both sides on the front, I think on both sides behind the door, it's got med cabinets. Driver's side and officer's side, uh, some departments use those for the bunker gear for the person who's sitting in that seat. Some use it for medical equipment, they are set up for medical, there's electric power, I think there's 120 and 12 volt in most cabinets, both. Severe duty interior consoles and interior trimming, this is important because one of the things that. People who bought E1s of the 90s didn't like was the interiors were pretty plasticky and they fell apart a lot. I was on a career department where we kept the Phillips head screwdriver right on the dashboard and the engineer's job when you pulled up to an alarm was the. Company officer and the crew would get off the truck to go check an alarm and the operator's job was to go around with the Phillips head screwdriver and tighten up those screws. Um, in the interior for the whole life of that car. Um, so this is. This was one of the many things that E1 figured out after long enough that they had to do differently. If you look at Boston, all of Boston's frontline trucks right now, completely 100% E1 trucks. And, um, that is partly because of the development of the severe duty. Interior and severe duty, other severe duty equipment on the truck. So those trucks can put up with the abuse of running all day, Hartford's running more and more E1s now. We have a Boston spec and they basically call up and say, we have the money for three more. Start, start those trucks and we just repeat their spec, it's just, build three more of them. Uh, Hartford has their own spec now. So they have a Hartford spec and the same thing. So, uh, universal antenna mounts are already factory installed. That was another thing, another customer request was everyone's getting the trucks in to either. At the dealer or back to their town and then they're going down and drilling holes through the roof of the cab to start putting antennas. So E1 just puts a bunch of antenna. Faces right into the roof and runs the wires down. To keep you from having to drill holes in the roof of the brand new truck that you just got before it's even in service. Uh, lids and covers for all the hose beds are included in this package. Uh, wheel and lighting package, you can go cheaper, some departments will go with a federal. Um, or another brand to get a little cheaper. Most of the time our customers prefer wheeling and we have a very good relationship with them. We share a lot of information to help them with engineering. And, um, so when we spec. We usually spec these trucks with wheel and lights because. It's considered, um, maybe the little bit better option, it's certainly the more expensive option. Um, and that's typically what customers are looking for. Uh, does have a rear large diameter, uh, hose inlet, the pinned waterway, as I said. Included in here, you'll see there is a ladder package. That is already included in this truck, so the ladders that would go in all the compartments in the back are already included. Multiple levels of corrosion and rust prevention, as I said, the galvanized, primed and painted frame and torque box. Um, all the electrical wiring after it's completed is coated with a waterproofing type. I like to think of it as a really fancy wax, but it seals, it's another level. Who's having success with E1 trucks, as I said before, Hartford, Boston, every frontline piece. This particular model, uh, we've already talked about, Sandy Hook has Quint 440. And, um, we have multiples other in New England. And, uh, one of our other sales reps has a good relationship with Amesbury, Mass. And, uh, their chief offered to be willing to talk to, uh, anybody about their truck. I included the contact information so you have the option to talk to them without. The sales rep being there, so you can have an honest conversation. And so that's the end of sort of the formal presentation, I just want to say thank you. Um, you will notice that I had our office put the fire department name into graphic for the truck. Hopefully. With, um. With us being, uh, already having a rough price to you and us being very close to being able to get you a real price, which is really just you giving me the information you need. To tell me of what you want on the truck. I can finalize the price, if you say you want the truck exactly. As it is here, just give us a price for what that truck is, I can, I might be able to have that price by tomorrow. We just have to check in because when I quoted the first time around, it was a rough estimate price and it was over 30 days ago. We can't control what E1 does in the meantime until we put the truck under contract. When we put the truck under contract, the price is locked at that point. There is the caveat that if the engine change, if we crash into the engine change, they run out of engines, there could be, they'll put that in the contract, E1 will force us to put that in the contract. But we have, where we are in production, we're. Way ahead of when the engine change is supposed to happen, the engine change should be happening. Um, January 1st of 26. And this truck is scheduled to land, as I said, the end of June, beginning of July 25. At Greenwood in North Attleboro, Mass, so we should be months and months ahead of the engine change. And so we, we, we feel absolutely sure we have the current engine. And at this point in the production line, they're supposed to have that engine already committed from Cummins. Um, so we, we have no doubt. But E1 will make us put it in the contracted clause if they run out of engines, that we're gonna have to adjust for that, which is a big adjustment unfortunately. So, as I said, we can have a price depending what you're looking for very quickly and even if you say, I wanna add a bunch of features. Some departments say we're due for hope for everyone, so we're gonna order 6,000 feet of hopes with this truck. Just build it into the cost of this truck and we'll put the hose up on the rest of the trucks. Or some people have all the equipment they want coming off another truck and they say, just give me the truck the way it is. Most people are in the middle, most people are gonna say, we want some equipment and we want some of the stuff mounted, we'll handle the rest. Once I have that information, I give you an exact price. We already know the build schedule. We already know you should be getting the correct engine, not have to go to the cost increase later. So, I guess that's what I want to tell you as far as the presentation. Um, we did very reasonably expect the end of this truck. To be in, in that timeframe and. And, you know, we're somewhere, somewhere around the 1.3 million. It's probably a little above that, it's. All I can tell you right now is about 1.3 million until we cut things down and then I go back and check for the exact price because. E1 ups and little increases all along the way, so when we go back and call them and. And all the information in that they tell us exactly where we are, so certainly it's probably gonna be a little above 1.3. But it's not gonna be like 1.5. You know, once we figure out the equipment. We'll cut that down exactly. So. Ready for questions?
Do you know the turning radius on this chassis?
I don't, it's on the webs, uh, it's on the website and you'll have it by tomorrow.
What you say, the contractor's though increases.
Correct, the contract price is a firm price with that one caveat about the engines, right? The good news, well, um, no, it's not good news, there's no good news about the engine thing. This truck would be impacted a little less than some trucks because this truck already has the, uh, 3000 transmission. And that's the same transmission that would go with the new engine. Some of the trucks we spec are not the 3000 transmission and when you go to the new engines, you have to go to the 3000 transmission. So, um. But it's still. That the, the upcharge to go to the new engine between the cost of the engine, the larger radiator, the different exhaust system, the different. The engine housing and the cab changes to fill all the components in it. The whole cost increase for the new engine is anywhere from 60 to 80,000 dollars. It's. It's the thing I don't want to be telling you guys, you know. But that's. All of you can say, you know, we have that conversation later, yeah, he did tell us that was the number.
Can you just explain it to me about the scissor jacks versus the, the sidearm jacks that. I don't used to see in a.
Sure, so if you looked at the truck partially built. So the body is still off of, all the framework and the jacks are installed in the truck, if you were looking at it, say, from the rear. You would see basically an X across the inside of the body, the jacks are in an X formation. Inside the body and they, so they come out at an angle. And go down, so they're low, the intent is you can step over them if you're working alongside the truck. Say you're up against cars or something, you can still step over the jack to get to all the compartments, to the pump panel. Um, whereas the H style jack comes out on a straight arm and then goes up and down. There are certainly advantages to both designs, this is the design that E1 feels is the best in this. The big advantage is our jack spread is only 11 feet wide. And that's full range, all the way down. You keep the same, uh, tip load all the way down. The only places you're restricted on down movement is so that you don't crush the body of the truck. You know, the cab obviously a little higher. Whereas over the sides you can get down lower because you're not coming down on the cap.
So, yesterday afternoon, a couple of us went to Sandy Hook. Seen their truck and looked at it. Um, I have a couple of questions regarding the, the calf, on the seating, it's, the, Sandy Hook's. In the back was seating for three. It was a five man cab, this was a six man cab.
Right.
But two of those seats, two of those seats had those fold down seats and they were very short. If you get a big person. I mean. You're almost better off sitting on the floor than you are sitting on that seat with all your ear. So I was reading in the specs, so there's a, there's a bench seat, correct, that says two.
Two, yes.
Are they fold seats or they full seats?
That's a full seat, the two flip downs are the ones against the back wall that are facing forward.
There are those, those small.
They're the flip down, yes.
But you can change those to get a full seat, correct, do you have the room for that?
Uh, I'd have to look based on this cab length and see in this cab length if that's available because as you add. There are three different cab lengths, as you add length of the cab, you get more floor space out, as you can get bigger seats in there. Um, but I'll.
It was a very nice truck.
Buffalo's truck has flipped out seats. Yeah, I haven't seen.
That's because you're supposed to be like this ready to.
Oh, yeah. So the, and the windows, because it took me a while to read all this, I keep reading it. So, the windows are manuals, they're not electric, correct, are manual rollups?
Uh, they are manual windows, yes.
And on.
If it was my choice, I would have, I would have expected with electric windows, but I don't.
But on this, on this, on the specs. It says that the large diameter hose is 800 feet of four inch. We have five inch hose, we don't carry four inch.
Right. So I can find out what the difference is, as you know, the folded size of a five inch is not too much difference. It'll probably affect that, it'll bring it down slightly. A lot of the departments that. A lot of the departments that we're dealing with all throughout Massachusetts and all that are running four inch. But there are semi-city departments, you know, or urban rural mix. And so I suspect that's why they said it with the four inch thing, but I'll find out.
And, and what is equipment allowance 2,500 pounds? That's what you could add?
That's that. The truck is designed right now to accommodate twenty five hundred pounds of equipment being added to it.
Added to it.
That doesn't necessarily mean we're stuck at exactly twenty five hundred pounds. That's how, that's how it's engineered.
That's excluding personnel?
Correct. That's equipment added to the truck, not, not the.
And then looking at the diagram, because most of Sandy Hook's trucks, that truck, it's a very nice truck. Had uh, hinge doors, not roll up doors. So I'm trying to look on this. You have, it's mostly roll up doors on this truck or you have one? Hinge door right behind the cab, right?
Right. So behind the cab are pan doors and then behind the pump. So they're um. They're, they're, they're numbered front to rear. So compartment one, which is right behind the cab, it is pan doors. Compartment two behind the pump panel is roll up. And um, three over the um, wheel well is roll up and so is four.
Okay.
So everything behind the pump panels, roll ups. Oh, I don't have the other side, but I'm sure it matches.
Right. That's what I'm saying. What's on the other side? So I would see, and then with that front bumper, they have that large twenty inch bump, but they have, they have sections of cross lays.
Yes.
In there.
Right.
So how much more of an addition would it be to plum that front bumper with like a trash line?
So I believe that is, I send my list of questions. I believe that front bumper is plumbed for a single line in that tray. So it'd be like a trash line in the tray as opposed to cross lays. And I'll find out.
And then I remember the truck. And then. When you open the, the, the doors where the pump panel is, those, that's where their cross lays are over the top of that pump panel.
Yes.
Yes. It was right there. But I'm looking at here, you have trays.
Right. They're right out in the open above the pump panel.
And, and that truck had dual features for the, for the driver and the officer for the monitors. Does that hap, does this truck have that too?
Um, this has some stuff for the officer. I know I, I remember seeing um, officer side speedometer. And uh, we'd have to go back and look through.
I didn't see it.
It's hard to do it quickly with three, three pages, but.
I'll, I'll check it. Uh, so officer for the monitor, the truck, the chassis monitor.
And I also like when you put on your right blinker light, that lane watch where the, the screen comes on when you're taking a right hand turn. You can see the driver and the officer can see those screens making that right turn. I like that.
I'll, I'll see.
Alright, I'll find out about that.
And then one more question. Sorry, I'm giving you a laugh.
No, this is.
I've been, I've been dying.
I got a list, so carry on.
So anyhow, so the, the outriggers, alright. How is it when you have a really crazy grade? And you're using those things like that versus a standard outrigger like, we'll say like.
Like the H pattern, right?
Correct.
So these outriggers, so they don't just come down at an angle also. They can be, they don't just come out and work their way out at an angle. They can be. Pushed downward also. It's just instead of coming out like this and the end being what pushes up and down, the pistons that push up and down are inside the framework of the truck. So they, you know, they're, well, they're, they're across each other inside the truck.
Right.
You know, while they're aiming down, obviously. So they could push downward to pick up to accommodate for the angle and the um. The angles uh. Again, we have so many different areas. I can't keep track of all the different degrees that each truck is safe working zone is. But, and I hate to say, well, you go look at the website, but if you go look at the website, all that information is there on what the working angles are for.
One more question, sure. Sorry. So. I didn't actually go up on the ladder. But I look from afar. So I would see when that ladder is extended, it's wide. At the beginning, but as you get up there, that thing narrows down.
Sure, a lot, sure, correct. And I believe, I believe, and you know, this is, this is a little bit of sales pitch here, but I believe it's true. I believe if you measure the width of our ladder and the Pierce ladder, ours is wider on the top section. They are narrowed down because one section obviously fits inside the other as you pull it back. Thank you very much.
Alright, I'll go. I got a couple of questions. I think some of my questions have been answered, so if I repeat myself, forgive me. If we were to custom design a truck, how long, what would the delivery time be?
So there, it depends on a few factors. It depends on, so. We're, we have uh, depending on body materials, stainless steel versus aluminum, depending on um, a couple other of the major factors about the truck. We are anywhere from. Probably thirty four months to forty four months right now.
Pretty much the industry standard.
It is unfortunately, you know, just six months ago, we were, we were saying no more than thirty six months. Now we're pushing out to forty four.
Alright, the uh, the ground ladder setup, you had a, a three fly thirty five, I believe it was?
I think so.
And the three fly thirty five being replaced with a two fly thirty? Because nobody likes a three fly thirty five.
The, the last time I was good with.
Or can, or can a two fly thirty five?
The last time I was good with helping look one of those, I was probably in the academy.
Yeah. And then so at this point, what type of additions or deletions for that matter can be made to this, to the stock truck?
So. The short answer to that is if you, if you think anything would require reengineering, that bumps us back in the, in the um, production line. Anything that probably doesn't affect engineering will not affect things other than figuring out what the cost is for the change. So things like shelves and all that stuff doesn't affect the production time at all. But if we want to change, we might be able to change from roll up doors to pan doors without affecting. I'm not sure if that, I'm just, I'm just bringing up potential things. But basically the way the trucks are built now, because they're so complicated, is you finish. Deciding all the things you want in the truck, you send it in, they send it to engineering and they make sure that one thing doesn't conflict with another thing and all that other stuff. Because now everything, you know, all the electronics are sensitive. All the systems don't want to be bothered by any other system or they have to work with another system. So uh, everything goes through engineering and once you go through engineering, then that helps set the path forward for the production time. So that's the short answer. But if you have things you want us to consider, you send me that list and I'll talk to the people and I'll find out if it's gonna mess us up in production or not.
And you said the, the pump was a hail fifteen hundred GPM?
Correct.
Can you, can you add, is there the ability to add an extra discharge to make it a two thousand GPM?
I would think that we can do. I'll make sure.
And if, if you could ex- explain the, the tip load wet versus dry a little bit more? And we talked about it a little bit.
Right. So um, as you probably know from the industry already and maybe from conversations about the Pierce and again, that. There are multiple charts on tip load. And um, like I said before, wind affects that you, the uh, the tip load doesn't change up to thirty miles per hour, I think. And I think it's thirty to fifty, it's reduced to five hundred. And then after fifty, you're not supposed to fly. Quarter inch ice is the typical measurement, so quarter inch ice knocks you down to five hundred pounds. Um, wet. I believe we stay. I think we stay seven fifty with the discharge running. Unless you point the discharge upwards because that pushes pressure down on the ladder. I think that's where we reduce. I will get you the charts though and I will send them to you.
Could you send those to Doug too?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, let's see. What's the, what are the major differences between this stock truck and Sandy Hook's truck? You could expect this.
Um.
I know somebody guys went out and saw Sandy Hook.
So a, as you said, one of the big differences has been talked about some already is the front bumper cross lays. That's a significant difference you see right from the outside. Um, there are a lot of small things and some of it even has changed just in. So if you think about when that truck was ordered, that was delivered about a year and a half ago, that means it was probably ordered three years ago. Um, so some of the features, small features have just changed over time, but significant things. I think there's uh. There's some packages in even some of the decor, like some of the way the paint was set up was set up differently from this. There were a lot of small custom things, so. When uh, so Connecticut for our company is covered by three sales reps. We, we each have a section of Connecticut. And um, Sandy Hook is actually my area, but the previous guy who had more of Connecticut before I came on. Had sold that truck before I came on. And so it's three mics that cover Connecticut. And so the mic that sold that truck. Because that was a custom order when, you know, had meeting after meeting after meeting where he went through checkbox by checkbox and pick. So there are a lot of smaller things. But for major things, it's, it's the cross lay and things like that. Um, and I don't remember their configuration of their discharges and stuff like that. You know, they may have custom, you know. Well, we want a large diameter on both sides or just on the pump panel side, you know, or. Um, things. I just don't remember all the details of that truck.
It was on both sides.
Yeah.
Was it?
Okay. It was inside the cabinet, inside a roll up.
Right. And then you said a, a delivery date to, to Greenwood would be uh, uh, June, July of twenty five.
Yes.
Typically, how long does it take, you know, post-delivery, you know, for, for the fire department and uh, you know, lettering, radios, whatever?
Right.
Is that what you're talking about? A month, two months, six months?
Again, depending what we do there versus what's done here. A lot of people have their radios done when they get it back to town. Um, so if you're talking about, say. Lettering, training, because we'll do training there. And then I think we, I think we'll be training local also. That uh, can be as short as probably less than a month. What really adds time is mounting equipment. Some people will bring us two or three pickup truck loads of equipment. And then they'll come up two or three times with post-it notes to figure out where stuff goes. It's a hard process sometimes. If this truck is different from your last truck or you haven't had this type of truck. You start thinking, alright, well, I want all my spare CBA bottles back. And then you start putting other equipment on the, oh, no, we can't put them there because this other equipment has to go there. And so sometimes it's a lengthy process. Sometimes we have trucks in two or three months, which is bad for everybody. You're getting delayed on getting it. E one is hammering on us saying you gotta deliver the truck so we get the final payment. Um, you know, you want the truck, we want it out of the shop eventually because we have other trucks that need to get in. Um, so, so really depends on what level. Whatever you want, we're gonna do.
So fall of twenty five is a realistic expectation.
Right. We do turn a lot of trucks out a month after they arrive.
Now, currently this truck is reserved for, for Bethel?
It, it is on hold and uh, the hold goes another week or so. Well, you know, the date I confirmed the hold, that was a two week hold. And I only get two weeks at a time because I have other departments, other sales reps who are trying to sell the truck. And right now they can't sell the truck.
So I think that puts us to next Wednesday. I think it was.
I believe, I believe.
Wednesday or Thursday.
Right. Now, if I can tell my boss, if I can show my boss some sort of information, it says you guys are really serious, I can get them to extend that. But they do, you know, there are other, there are other sales reps because we cover such a big area who are. They're asking when my hold is gonna be up so that they can take a shot at it.
So this, this truck has a guaranteed production slot. It's, it's guaranteed to go into production on a specific day?
Greenwood has already paid money to E one for a portion of this truck.
There's, but is there a specific date that it goes into production?
Yeah, and I don't have that date with me, but that date is a direct relation to that June, end of June delivery.
And other than the uh, the possibility of an engine change, are there any other unforeseen costs?
That is, what I know is that is the only caveat that will go in the contract about changes in costs. There will be no, oh, we gotta come back to you because we have twelve percent price increase. None of that stuff can happen in the contract. Um, it is, it's an iron contract.
Uh, is there any way to protect us against the, the engine change? I mean, for, for example, if we entered into a contract tomorrow, can we guarantee this engine is ours?
So there's two ways to do that. If it's re, if it's specifically about a budget number. We, we sell you the truck at the higher price and we work out some sort of a deal to bring it down. If it makes it through production, we don't get the larger engine. Essentially get like a rebate or a, a markdown. Um, or. So they. That's the way, I mean, we could, we could fluff the truck up and bill that in. The thing like I could try to give you a final number that has another eighty grand in it, but you're gonna see that I jumped a lot on price and. Then we risk bidding too high against somebody else. Um, so really.
If we were subject to that engine change, it would be between sixty and eighty thousand dollars, you said?
Correct. Probably the sixty five thou, probably sixty five thousand, only because you have the same transmission that would go with the new engine. But that, they're telling us it's depending on the engine transmission combination, it's sixty to eighty. So, and, and the other thing I can do too is if you want to have a comment, I can get my vice president of sales, he's. He's the guy who is in charge of sales throughout the entire Greenwood empire, if you will. And we can put him on the phone with you and you can have that same conversation with him. And he can tell you with his assurances exactly how this will. Cause he, he can overrule me, you know?
How about prepaid discounts? Any discounts for prepaying?
So we can check and see if that's available. We do hit, depending on circumstances, we do have up to a four percent prepaid discount.
Take note, Brad. He's the finance guy. He writes the check.
I will find out if this truck is eligible for that.
Um, and what kind of train, training is available, you know? For the, for the department?
So uh, we have. In-house training that we'll do at, you send up a crew of people that you want to get trained with our people, our factory certified. And then we will also arrange, um, and it's a little harder to arrange just timing wise, but we will arrange for local training also.
Right. I mean, what is the duration of that training? Do we get days worth of training? Do we get a day, a couple hours?
Uh, I'll find out how many hours it is, but we typically. If, if a department's new to aerial, we're just gonna give you more hours because you need to learn more. If you already have aerial operations as part of your sort of life. Then we don't have to spend as much on operations. We spend more on focusing on that particular vehicle. Um, so it will vary some, but we're gonna make, we're gonna give you the training you need to run the truck probably because. I can't risk you saying, ah, that guy Mike came down. He was one of the three mics and he told us all this stuff. We bought the truck. They left us high and dry. Don't anyone ever buy from Greenwood again. I can't risk that because I don't, I don't get paid a penny until I sell a truck and you know, the company knows we're keeping around if, if we can't sell trucks.
And is there any type of uh? Long-term maintenance program that comes with the, the sale of the truck or?
So there is a certain amount of uh. So there's a bunch of warranty included, um, work. And I don't, I, I've actually never been asked the question about like an extended maintenance plan.
Like, like an annual service contract or anything?
Uh, yeah, we can do that. Um, and we do have two service facilities in Connecticut and we also do have mobile service too. So we have. Even if you want to have us do your pump testing for you, we have a truck that comes out with a giant tank trailer. And we do all your pump testing, uh, recertification, all that stuff.
Yeah, and I, I think more specifically the question I was getting at is, is like an annual service contract provided with the sale of the truck? Or is that would be an annual cost that we would burn, you know, it burned to us?
I will find out.
And then um. In you, in your conversations, I, I guess you've been working primarily with Chief Avenue Scott. Have, have you made any additions to the original uh, spec that you've sent?
Not at this point.
There's been no?
That's, well, and I sent him the information. I said, let me know if there's stuff. Um, and so if he lets me know, then I ask my people to price it.
So um. Currently, I, I haven't read the whole spec. I haven't had to read all thirty three pages. Obviously, I think Chief would be in on my half. He started reading them the night I handed them out. But is there, what, what kind of provisions are made for any shelving or anything that's currently in the spec?
Uh, there is a certain amount of shelving included and. If we have, if I have to throw in a couple, they'll probably take it out of my commission. Um, but if I have to throw in a couple because we missed something, you need another couple shelves, I'm just gonna make that work.
Okay. And I, I, is there any provisions in, in the spec for um? Departments tool, tool mounting or equipment mounting it? Or would that be an additional cost?
Um. When I, so I have, I can do it either way. When I ask for the final pricing, I can include a certain amount of hours for mounting. Or we cannot, but it would be added into the price. So there isn't mounting, there isn't hours for mounting included right now.
I think that was the only other questions. That's all the questions I had at this.
So right after the question about the thirty foot two fly ladder, there was another question that I, my scribble runs off here and I'm. It was a change.
I just, I just asked the basic question. At, at this point, what can we, what can be added or deleted from spec?
Okay.
Of, of significant.
Okay.
And then. Yeah. Defer to Chief Baker's if he has any questions at this point. And then I'll get back to the.
So what you're saying is?
So what you're saying is that because the um adding of equipment is um optional, that wasn't part of the initial cost?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And again, like I said with the shelves, if it's just a couple of items. We're not gonna upcharge you to install a couple of items, but some people, like I said, bring three pickup truck loads worth of equipment with brackets. And then we have to go through and it can be weeks of labor, and they won't take that much out of my commission.
What would you say the average, average cost of uh mounting for an apartment?
Um. The people who show up with three truckloads, um, we sometimes end up into the thousands of dollars. Because it ends up not only being labor hours, it ends up being a lot of hardware and stuff like that. But I can get, uh, I can get a target range for that, if you want.
And what would the uh cost be for graphics?
Uh, that again will vary, of course, some on what you're looking for. Um, but you know, it's even the, even the basics is in the thousands. And we have some people who go, you know, all over the truck. All sorts of, you know, so what's included right now is the NFPA required striping, reflective striping, that's what's included. Um, but depending on the level of that you add to it, um, we have people with twenty thousand dollar orders. Um, you know, for all sorts of graphics. Some people have the names, you know, like of all their fire commissioners are stenciled on the side of the truck. And so, but if that's what somebody wants, of course, we're gonna sell it to them, right? You know, if that's what they're asking for. You know, when, when you're talking about a truck that's well over a million dollars, there's, there's percentage wise, you know, there's a big variation in all these little details. Um, and I know you're looking for more of an exact answer to the problem, because it's, there's such a wide variety of things. I can't give you, like, I can't quote you a number tonight. Which I would love to be able to do for each of these items, but I can get the answers for you.
Um, and what was the overall height of this truck?
Uh, it's on the.
Eleven seven?
I was gonna say eleven seven.
Okay, so. I looked last night on. Google Maps, the fifty-three bridges, eleven four. So, wouldn't fit under the, the bridge, so.
I think Stowland is the only one that makes a truck that'll fit under that bridge.
Yeah, so we can build a truck that, we can build a truck down to an aerial down to like ten. Ten-ten maybe? Somewhere in there, but again, you're talking about a lot of variation. Now you're talking about ordering a.
You have to go back to design and that's.
Yeah, you're talking about a truck that's three or four years away. I, I expect for a coastline community in Fairfield County back in the fall, I expect a truck. Um, it was a mid-mountain aerial. Um, with a bucket hundred foot mid-mountain, and. We had a low travel height consideration there, uh, because of some of the bridges for the railroad along the shoreline. And um. That truck, but that was also a platform, tandem ads and all that. That truck, at that point in the fall, that truck came in at like one point eight four. And unfortunately, I lost the deal to Pierce at two point two. Um, but Pierce had what they wanted, so, so.
Um, I think that's all I have because most of the questions were asked by the, the rest of the panel that I had.
Just another question on the bench seat. Would that require uh re-engineering?
I don't believe so, and I have that on my list of questions.
Brad, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. I, um, the price that you gave the one point three, does that include the source well pricing?
Uh, that is, that is not factoring in the source well. I would have to find out how the source well works.
And will it affect the, could you guys, all right, or?
I have to find that out.
Some of those discounts are like five to seventeen percent.
I'll find out.
I think that question won't be.
Hey, the money guy stands an important spot.
Any of the other commissioners have any other questions?
Where does this go for warranty service?
Um, so the, there are two authorized, um, trained and authorized facilities in Connecticut. Um, one in the uh Meredith Wallingford area and one in the New Haven area. And if it can't be serviced there, if it's more complicated. Um, like, if it's unfortunately something big, like a tear down of the aerial, it'll probably go back to that overall. Because that's where our big shop is, not that overall. And then we do everything there all the way. We've got a lot of shoreline trucks and even other brands, shoreline trucks, and they have rock frames and stuff. And um, they will even disassemble an aerial truck completely and put it in frame. That's, so that's the level they can do with that facility. It's everything.
Chief, I know, I know you've kind of been heading up the, your, your truck committee. Do you have any specific questions you want to?
My, just the biggest one is, uh, what kind of ground you can set the truck up on, your, your. You know, slopes and angles and.
I'm gonna gather along with the tip charts, I'll get that information too. Um, as I said, please feel free to bop around the websites, the Greenwood one, the E one one, and learn for yourself, but I'm not telling you, I won't look it up. I'm just saying, feel free, and I'll get that information for you also. And, and I, everything else is pretty much stuff, so.
Alright, being that this is a special meeting, we don't generally have, you know, public comment. But I, I, I think. We're going to entertain, if anybody has a specific question they want to ask the, the sales representative. We can ask a question, get answered to the question. Let's not, you know, go into a whole tangent. Anybody has a specific question? Nick?
Thank you for the opportunity. I know there's a lot of changes with the EPAs, um, with these bigger trucks. Is this truck? Um. In that category? Is there a fit-up in the garage that has to be done? I hear it could be a fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. It's something about keeping the house converter warm. Uh, at all times, twenty-four hours a day? Is this truck?
No, all that stuff is, that, that stuff is. Sorry, that was a little balmy start there. Some of those things are potentials, some of those are not yet completely worked out. But always are in the after twenty twenty-six. Well, it is really called the twenty twenty-seven emission standard. The reason it's starting January first twenty-six is, of course, Cummins is about the only game out there in over-the-road engines right now. And um, you know, one of the only big players now. And so Cummins can't be in a position where they're still selling motors. Into, after January first twenty twenty-seven, they'd be in violation of the federal law if they sell any more of those motors, except for parts for repairs.
So if it was a special order truck, it would have to be in that category?
Right, so they're gonna start a year earlier to make sure they don't crash into that deadline. So January first twenty twenty-six. They're gonna stop selling that motor new into production, into new vehicles. And they'll only build that motor, they'll keep the plant running, to build that motor for part sources and probably shipping overseas. You know, where they don't have the same emission standards. Um. So that's really where all of this comes in, is after January twenty-first twenty-six.
Thank you.
Right, what you would get right now, what you should get with this truck, and I feel certain we're gonna get, and I talked to the vice president again today to make sure, was. Uh, what you're gonna get is the same thing you've had since twenty twenty-one, the current emission standard. No change in it.
Anybody else?
Mr. Swet. Uh, with respect to like safety standards and all that, is there a place that we can really look that up compared to other vehicles?
Um, sure, so this, if you go um to the website and look at the uh Metro One Hundred Quint on the E one website, you'll see the, sort of the sales pitch of what the features are. And um, if you have any questions, reach out to me or to our headquarters, and we can give you more specifics. Um, the other thing too is you can reference what the current. It, it references what NFPA standard it's designed to, and you could dig in deeper into that too, which is, you know, always a lot of, I'm a fire marshal, so digging into the NFPA standards is always a.
Is there any, is there any data available anywhere like this compared to other trucks if it's? More safety issues, accidents, things?
Well, that's, that's an interesting question, so um, I'll find out. Thank you for throwing me a curveball.
And it'll like carthex.
Yeah. Mike, Mike, if you could actually share the, the actual web address for people that are interested, I may not know.
The link to the literature on the Metro One Hundred.
So, the one that I put on the.
On the E one website.
Oh, like the literature, literature tab. The literature. I was just on it earlier today. Maybe I broke it? Yeah, because all of these colored pictures in the presentation. Um, all of these came off of that website. Yeah. For a couple of, sorry. That's, that's remind me to order milk.
Anybody else have a question?
Nice thing about living in the country, you can still get home delivery.
Alright, I guess there's no other questions. I thank you, Mike.
Okay.
I think uh, if the commission is so inclined, we'll take like a five-minute recess and uh. And we'll hear from the Pierce representative and.
Like I said, I'd just like to thank you for your time. Um. We know that you're, you got a big decision. I've been on a lot of truck committees myself. And um, so I've been on both sides of this. And um, you know, we think we can give you a good truck. We also know when it's coming, and we also can tell you within a couple of days what exactly what it's gonna cost.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Oh, really?
Well, those in favor of five-minute recess?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll reconvene the special meeting of the fire commission and. We'll open up to the uh. Pierce representative to give a proposal on a ladder truck for Stony Hill Fire Department.
Good evening. Thank you for having me out. Uh, those of you who don't know me, my name is Jeff Corrigan with Fire Matic Supply. I've been with the company about thirteen years, uh, started as a technician. Uh, for the company, and then moved into the office as service manager and started doing truck sales about seven years ago. Um, my sales territory is a portion of Connecticut and New York as well, uh, but I currently uh run the Patterson, New York facility. Um, so uh, again, thank you for uh having me out to answer questions and, and propose the truck here that I think would uh work out very well for you guys. I'm in a little different position than Mike that was here with Greenwoods. Um, I've already been in the room and given out some drawings and specs and things of that nature. Um, and my, my presentation is to, yes, uh, tell you what my truck has. I have a binder here to leave uh with you that has um pretty much uh. Uh, proposals, contracts, Pierce specifications, warranty certifications, drawings, amp reports, and turning reports, so you guys can see the maneuverability of the truck. Um, so I'm gonna leave all this with you tonight. Um, but my, my bullet point i- is kind of uh based upon. Um, pointing out where uh my truck, I feel as though excels over the demo truck um that is offered by the competitors. Um, to take and, and kind of explain, you know, uh, that price gap as well. Uh, so, so that obviously has to be addressed. Um, so as I go down through here, um, you know, I'm gonna point out, like, for instance, my spec has ABS traction control and stability control. Uh, in, uh, the, it's a great uh safety uh aspect, having stability control on an aerial. Uh, not everybody driving these large trucks is used to it. Um, and again, it, it, it's a safety thing. Uh, and obviously adding those uh extra systems uh to the truck, uh, there's a price difference as well. Um, one of the big ones is I'm proposing in my stock truck a big block engine. It's a thirteen-liter. Um, twenty twenty-four emissions. Uh, and my truck is, uh, is due to be completed in six months from now. So there's no chance that we're gonna get any kind of other engine than what I have in my proposal. Um, so this is again a thirteen-liter, five hundred and ten horsepower with eighteen fifty torque. So we're going from twelve fifty to eighteen fifty. Uh, the big performance difference, uh, both pulling hills and coming down hills. Uh, for your uh jake brake performance, holding you back as you're, as you're coming down the hill. Those larger litered engines really uh, uh, do make a big difference. Um, now with that engine upgrade, he, uh, they were talking about engine upgrades as well, but they were staying in the medium block category. We've now crossed over into the big block category. So a lot of changes are all packaged together and, and come with that engine. So you're going from uh an Allison three thousand series transmission to a four. We're going from seventeen ten um drive lines to eighteen ten. So everything is going from like an F one fifty to an F five fifty. It's, it's a huge jump. Um, we're running um larger frame rails that we put in those big block engines. For example, everybody on the market builds their trucks on ten-inch tall frame rails. Um, we do as well until we put big block engines in between the frame rails, and we bump that up to a thirteen and three eights. Um, so it does a couple of things for us. It gives us a great sturdy foundation to build on. Um, what we in the industry like to call beam flex when driving down the road. Essentially, you feel the truck flexing in the middle, because they're so long and that they're built on inadequate frame rails, you really start feeling that, that beam flex. Um, so we go ahead and, and make it a, a very large upgrade, um, that I just explained there. Again, eighteen ten drive lines. Um, another big one is that we have our uh frontal and side roll airbag systems in our stock truck. So we have a driver steering wheel bag. We have an officer knee bag to stop him from colliding with the dashboard. Um, and every outboard seating position has a side curtain airbag. Uh, and we also have on every seat, seatbelt pretensioners. Um, which, long story short, in the event of a frontal or rollover condition. Uh, the seatbelt actually retracts on its own with a pyrotechnic. Getting the belt tighter to your body, so you have less forward movement of your body before you hit a locked seatbelt. Um. The driver's seat, uh, that is the only air ride seat in the truck. That one is actually has a second pyrotechnic that yanks it down to the floor to get the driver's head away from the ceiling. Because as we know, uh, air ride seats kind of bounce. So it takes that bounce out of it, gets you down away from the ceiling to limit head injuries, and line you up with that side curtain airbag. Uh, so that's another big upgrade as well. Um. Pick on the, 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 the non-powered windows. We have power windows. Again, a little bit of a safety thing. Somebody lock the window down in the storm, you get in and pull out. Now you notice the rear windows are down. Uh, what are you gonna do? Stop and, and then roll them up? This here is all driver-controlled electric windows. Touch on a little bit of the, the differences in the aerial itself. Um, I can, we, and you talked about as well as shortjacking. Um, I can shortjack my truck, which means the uh non-working side, I do not have to extend the H-style stabilizer out from the side of the truck whatsoever. I can just go straight down. Um, so that's gonna leave the street open for passing uh apparatus, if you're one of tankers or if you have. Um, I also have the um stabilizer setup cameras on my truck. Um, so as I'm, you know, if, if, if I do have a narrow street and I want to send that stabilizer in between two parked cars. I can line that up using a camera before I even stop the truck. Uh, so that helps a lot to be able to keep that, that truck over to the side of the road. So shortjacking uh on my truck is zero uh maneuvering to the shortjack side as well. Locked right out. Um, I have a two thousand gallon a minute pump.
Pail or waters?
Pardon me?
Pail?
Uh, water, I think it's waters. Um, I'm gonna have to check my math. I thought my ladder section at the tip was two inches wider than his. He thought it was two inches wider than mine. We have to, we have to actually see what that is, but. Uh, the reason that's, that's important is because if you ever wanna have a, a roof ladder inside the fly section, pipe holes, things of that nature. It starts getting narrow up there, so having a wider fly section, that's what I'm striving for. Um. So, now we'll talk about reach. Uh, they have a uh hundred foot is proposed. I'm proposing a one oh seven. And we've been taught that ninety percent of fire-ground activity with um a ladder is set up between twenty-two and thirty degrees. Uh, when reaching off the street to, to a roof or a window. And in, in that twenty-two to thirty-degree setting, our truck is actually nine feet longer than um the hundred-foot competitors, whoever they are. You know, they're all the same. So we get an extra nine feet, which is, which is very important. Um, again, I, I, I did do some poking around, looking at what my competition was going to be tonight, and I found that the device was a five hundred tip. And I found that the device was a five hundred tip load. I was unaware until he mentioned that it was a seven fifty, but I thought anything within eleven foot spread was a five hundred pound tip load. So that's, that's very important. Make sure you look into that and that it is actually a seven fifty. Because with the, the five hundred tip loads, you're actually meeting that five hundred pounds with two average firefighters in gear being on at the end of that stick. So you go and you add a rescued person onto it, you're over the tip load. Yeah. So in, in my mind, you have to have nothing less than seven fifty.
I'm sorry, your tip load is seven fifty, wet, wet and dry?
Wet is five hundred. So we make it easy about all the, the wind and the ice and everything. We say seven fifty dry, five hundred. You don't have to do any calculations. You just blow in water, you're five hundred. If you're not, you're seven fifty. I have the Tac four independent front suspension on my truck, which is according to Pierce, is a three hundred and forty percent better ride quality. And you do get better stopping distances. A traditional pumper at sixty miles an hour is able to stop sixty feet shorter comparing the Tac four to traditional I-beam. Because that suspension can handle stop, stopping torques better than a I-beam suspension with spring cam. So again, then we, then we, you know, strive on safety there, obviously. It's, you know, a truck that can stop faster and more in control is, you know, it, you know, that's one of those things where you can't put a price on safety. Another big item to point out with the Y section of my device is the Egress, which will call the last three rungs of the aerial device. Ours is bolt-on. So that is the biggest damaged spot of an aerial is the very tip. Because you're sticking it through windows, you're resting it on, not supposed to be resting it on roofs. You just don't have the depth perception at a hundred feet out and you might be hitting something and bend a rung or what have you. I can order that last bolt-on section. It can be thrown in a UPS box and I can get it essentially overnighted if I have. Other manufacturers in the industry, it's not bolt-on. That, that last Y section is all one piece. So you bend that Y section up, you have to order a Y section. So lead time on a Y section, I don't, I don't know what it is. Shipping on a Y section from the manufacturer, I don't know what that is. But it's definitely longer lead times and more repair costs for sure if you bend a tip of an aerial. I am minus ten degrees below grade versus the industry standard is about six. I have a fifteen hundred gallon a minute waterway. I believe the industry standard is a thousand. We get, you know, kind of deep here, but we have what we call an emergency power unit. All the hydraulics, let's say the truck falls and we have our, our ladder up against a burning building, what have you. And we don't have engine control to obviously drive our hydraulic pumps to be able to get our ladder away and out of trouble. We call them an EPU, an electronic power unit. Electrically controlled, starts up, gives you hydraulic pressure, allows you to move that ladder. They get very hot, very fast. I'm rated for a thirty minute runtime. Industry standard is five minutes. So I can do a lot of movement with my EPU to get that thing out of the situation we're in, stowed and get the truck, you know, package back up. We talked about short jack. I'm a little, I'm at five hundred gallons of water. The cab I'm offering is a seventy inch cab. Center of the front axle to the back of the cab is seven inches. So that is essentially our medium. There's one larger, there's one shorter. So plenty of room. We don't, we do the flip down seats in the sixty inch cab. There's no need for it in seven, those forward facing seats. Let's see, I'm showing two inch and a half, inch and three quarter hose, obviously cross lays and one two and a half over the pump. I believe they're about two hundred feet capacity each. Thousand feet of five inch in the hose bed. Wanted to touch on uniformity of the fleet a little bit and other safety item. Just keeping things the same, you know, if you jump from one Pierce apparatus into another, for instance, and you're, the driver needs to turn off the jake brake quickly because all of a sudden you're in an icy condition, you realize that the engine brake was on and you don't want it to be. You're in the same spot in every Pierce. There's no looking around for it and trying to find, you know, where these items are. We kind of standardize where most of these switches are. It makes it easier for you guys as the, as the end user. We run a thirty-three thousand, five hundred pound rear axle compared to a thirty-five thousand pound rear axle. Reason I bring it up, you're forced with the thirty-five thousand pound rear to go to a vocational higher, which usually does not have a rating to go over fifty-five miles an hour. And if you do, it's a fire service rating and you can only do it for a certain amount of time. And that truck, you're required to actually stop and let those tires cool. They're not made for those long sixty, sixty-five mile an hour runs. They cannot handle that heat. So listen, it's not something that's going to make or break, but it's something to keep an eye on. It's an important thing. Included in my proposal, I have a full graphics package. So whatever, whatever you want. We'll keep it simple. Whatever you're looking for. I have one factory trip for final inspection. I have custom tool mounting. And I believe I put in anywheres between, let's see how much it was. I did either fifteen or twenty thousand to do full custom tool mounting. And we, we found that aerials are usually in that category. On the low end, they're fifteen thousand, high ends, twenty, depending on how elaborate we want to go. If you need to go order tilt deployers because you might put some rescue equipment on the truck, it, it, it'll be covered with that twenty thousand mark. So that's what I put in there to make sure you guys are all set. If it ends up being much, much less, it's something that we can take off the final. And I threw in free pump test and DOT for life of the truck. Did you say life of the truck? Yes, sir.
That will take place where?
Uh, it's really up to you guys. I would say Patterson because the traffic's a little easier to get to, but you're really about that. And that's what I was going to hit on too. You guys have two full service truck repair facilities owned by Firematic. Those guys aren't contracted to do work for us. It's us. It's our department. Within forty-five minutes. You can probably get to Patterson in a half an hour. Rocky Hill, one point forty-five minutes. Guaranteed no price increase. We already know what the engine's going to be. This truck's going online very soon. It's, it's coming out as available at one PM Eastern this Friday. So this truck would be.
I'm sorry, you said one PM this Friday?
This Friday.
As in the day after tomorrow?
Yes, sir. So this was a little bit of a challenge. Last time I was here to, and I heard you guys were looking for something within a year. That was very important to you. And this truck's going to hit that. It's going to come due this Friday. It's going to be offline and delivered to Firematic. More of the October, November of this year. Same answer that he gave. It depends on truck outfit with how long we'll have it, but it averages about a month. Again, in the binder, I have all the full specs, drawings, warranty certs, turning radius and proposal and contracts. Would you like me to go just kind of breeze through the spec? Or it's very similar to what I gave last time and gave the presentation on. It's totally up to you.
I think you should breeze through it only because I've had two different specs. I had a, I had a, I had a stock truck and then I had a custom designed truck by the department. So if we can just kind of go through what the actual truck is that's coming available on.
Yep. This is a enforcer chassis. It is not the puck version. This is a traditional pump behind the cab with a pump panel setup, two thousand a gallon a minute. Again, larger frame rails, Tac four front suspension, Goodyear tires all the way around. Let's see, the, the chrome package on the wheels. They are aluminum wheels. Uh, let's see, airing left for airing up the truck, big block engine. Going to have the four thousand series transmission with the larger driveline. Nineteen inch front bumper with a center hose tray, hundred and twenty-five feet of inch and three quarter capacity in that tray. Cover over the top as well. Little coating on the top. So when you get up to wash the windshield, you don't scratch the bumper. It's got that linex coating. In seventy inch cab. Retract mirrors that will fold out of the way if you hit them. Both heat on your lap in convex mirror, all adjustable from the driver's seat. Half height doors, roll up windows.
Sorry, what do you mean half height doors?
No, they call them barrier doors or fold doors. Yeah.
Open step under the door.
Yeah, they're, they're a shorter door. So if you pulled up next to a Jersey barrier, essentially you can open the door and not hit it.
Understood.
Yeah. The longer door would smack right in. We have some mounting provisions on the engine tunnel. It's a three sixteenths plate that we run electric underneath it. So this is good for mounting all your flashlights, tick, four gas meter right on the doghouse. You're not actually blasting holes in the truck itself. So you do nice clean layouts and make everything laid out just how you want it. Vinyl interior. We're good for decon and wiping down. Heat and AC. Side roll and frontal, like I talked about, the airbag systems. This is going to be six seats. It's going to be obviously a driver officer, two rear facing outboard and then two forward facing inboard next to each other. We do have the adjustable seating on the back wall. So it lets you after delivery, you can configure the seats. If they're a little bit too close together, you can actually widen them out. That's a little advantage that they have. So it looks like it's going to have some forward facing cabinet tray outboard as well. Spare wiring. I'm going to have the antenna mounts as well. So I'm going to have a couple of them. I'm going to have a rear view camera. It is a multiplex truck. It's not a hardwired truck. That's the communication system within the chassis. It's configurable down the road. If you decide, you know, listen, when I, when we open the cab doors to get out of the truck, we want that whole side scene lights to come on. And it's, let's say it's not wired that way right now. All the program change, we send the request in what you'd like the truck to do and how you'd like it to act. Upload it into the truck. So now when you open those doors, all your scene lights come on. So that's the ability that you have with a command zone or multiplex truck that you do not with a hardwired chest. It's going to come with clear sky telematics. If you choose to activate that, it's, any check engine lights, any warnings that the truck will get, it's capable of actually sending emails to whoever the fleet manager is and/or Firematic itself. So we can actually read codes right from our computer and, and our emails right at home to know what's, what's going on potentially with the truck before we even send out a technician. That is a monthly subscription, yearly subscription, if you do want to continue it. We'd be good a few months free.
And what is the yearly subscription?
Three year is thirteen eighty-eight, five year is twenty-three seventy-seven. Obviously battery chargers. You're going to have an auto eject. Four hundred and twenty amp alternator, LED headlights. Lighting package is, it's a good package. It's all LED. When I get down to it, I'm going to see. So I do have some high vis lighting on it, which is just a step up from wheeling. It's more expensive. My scene lighting looks like it is all high vis. I'm waiting to get down to the morning before I tell you what that is. Water tank, five hundred. We touched on that. I have all roll up doors on my apparatus.
Look, Brad.
And door. And they are painted to match the lower body. Shelf tracks in every compartment. So if you want to add shelving and trays later, you can. Currently in the spec, I have six adjustable trays throughout the truck. I have three floor mounted slide out trays. I have one C-Tech brand toolbox with four drawers. Tool boards. I have one. Couple partitions. I got some pegboard on the rear walls, which is nice. So when you do any mounting in the engineer compartment, you're not actually drilling holes in the truck. You're drilling holes in superficial panel. Rear body, smooth aluminum with chevrons. I have air bottle storage in the fender panels.
How many?
Let's see. All right, they are, they are doubles and I have four. Ladders, thirty-five foot, three section. I do not know if I can fit a thirty-two section up right. I'll get three and a half. Yeah, I'll check it out. Let's see, I have twenty-four. It was like a couple sixteen's, fourteen. That's the ladder. Pipe holes providing those. Actually hold down. See them? They're water skills. And it's the adjustable packing. Here you will provide refunction. That's an extra. Oh, let's see. Inlets. I do not have front inlet, but I do have a front discharge. That'll, that'll be usual. Obviously the two and a halves on the side. With light adapters and caps. Cross lays, like I said, two inch and a halves on top, one two and a half right with it. I have, I don't have a foam system. I have foam provisions and I have a foam tank. So I have a twenty gallon foam tank and I have plumbing for it, but it does not have the, you know, the control or everything to complete the system. So what they do is they put in the items that if you decide you want a foam system that you couldn't add with your foam tank. But some called foam provisions. So if you ever want to add foam to the truck. Oh, foam drains and so forth. Obviously air horns, electric siren, federal queue. On the top of the boat running. Different controls. And I do have the whaling like that. Big time lighting lights. I'm, I'm drawing something here. See the guys again. I see that. Different body proceptacles already in the truck that are attached to shoreline. So if you have one department that you have your, all your default multi chargers with that. You can have proceptacles right in there. So it's sitting in the bank for the shoreline. They'll be charged. Seven fifty, five hundred tip load, thirty-five mile per hour landing. I believe that's a quarter inch ice rated. Seven fifty-five hundred tip load, thirty-five mile per hour, maybe that's a quarter inch ice rated. Uh, while it comes. Here's, I have a little lighting. Stabilizer replacement cameras, uh, did mention that in the standard command zone screen, as you're pulling up to the scene. Uh, you can turn that on, and if you're dragging the curb, you can stop between those cars. Uh, you you know exactly how far to be off the curb, so you're not either on the curb or in the grass. Just in the street, you can tell all that before you pull the parking brake. Uh, high vis light, I don't know if you ever use as well. Intercom. Actron monitor. You're gonna be able to run that from the tip in the episode. Five inch direct aerial inlet and career. Quick lock system, uh, so you can pin it to the five or upper mid. In a rescue. I would get down to the. Paints, I currently have single color on cap and body. Training. Thirty-second days here, for the factory reps. Guarantees are a fifty-year frame, whether you ask about that. And uh, you get one year falter, falter, and then everything kind of breaks up into the separate categories at that point. Eight, ten structures, ten, you know, one, weights, five, what have you, that's that's all there is. What's the ladder? Structural, I mean, it's twenty. Oh, and it's a steel ladder as well, it's not. It's quite here. Let's see, structure of the body, metal structure of the device is twenty. Cap structure. That brings me about to the end by our grease through, it's got here, twenty-four items. But yeah, I'm, I came in at one point seven three nine. With all those extra items that I uh, mentioned there. Truck is going out this Friday, like I said, at one, the end of Easter. New Central, um. That would be the one that fits the bill here. So there's, this thing is built efficient, you know, there's sure, the ascended there. So that's the top truck for one. Um, that's not, that's a tandem axle, um, they don't uh. They don't do this, that's, they're they're actually designed to never be able to do uh, a tip like that, a tip forward. Um, this is something that was either photoshopped or jacked up in the rear. Got it to stay there by extending the weight of the ladder over and then retract the rear um, stabilizers. You can't, if you do not hold it with that ladder, you can never do that. It's designed to never do it. No, it's moving forward. Can you tell me reliability, steel ladder versus aluminum ladder? Why is Firematic go steel? It's a stronger ladder. We chase cracks every year on the aluminum ladders at uh, aerial testing time. Not huge cracks, it's not like the aerial device is gonna fall out of the sky, but the cracks. It gained um, on the ladder test, and it's another uh, repair cost that you have to go through literally. A lot of times on a yearly basis, chasing around over cracks. And it's um, it's like I said, it's a stronger device, it holds grease better. aluminum is a very perfect material, uh, when we grease our ladders, um, you know, it obviously depends on how much you use it, how dirty it is, how required for those two. But in a volunteer setting, probably don't need to re-grease those beams of those ladders until the following year. Where aluminum ladders, I find that it's so porous, it attracts so much dirt and everything in it, that you can't make it a year. Without wiping it, cleaning it, and having to reapply, it gets sticky. And the cap, joke scenes, yes, they are not pulled down, they are. Or firefighters in the back. So obviously driver officer, so left side outboard. Powerful now. Right side outboard, standard seats. We got it. Let's see. Okay. So I have to. Have to check seating configuration here, cause it's saying. Six seats. Seeing driver officer. Scene outward. Rear facing. Upward facing. Seeing the cabinet. In the center. It's not listing the outboard seat. We did portray, it's saying it's there, but. Not showing what seat is. Well, then likely it's not, but I will.
Size cabinet, this, this sounds considered.
And what was on that front bumper? It was plugged for a bolt line, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Yep, it has a, let's see. It's an inch and a half, uh, so you screw it, or two inches. And then a hose tray in the center. Air out the. Direct aerial inlet, yes. Yep, five, I love career, yes. So you could email. Anybody have questions?
Question, yeah, the the business process of, you're saying it's coming due Friday at one o'clock?
Yes.
What does that, that mean, is open quarters, I didn't open order in?
Correct, it's to try to keep it, keep it even and fair across all the dealerships in the country, it's uh, changed about uh. About a year ago, the way they advertise stock trucks. You used to be able to just call up, and if you were, um, you know, if you stated your case, why you needed one of the worst than the other guy. You could grab stock trucks that were already allocated, moving up through it, and you could grab it, and they would never make the stock list. Well, as the times went out, three and four years, uh, the uh. Principals of dealership started complaining about that, because the larger dealers were grabbing up off stock truck before they were even built. So to keep everything fair, at noon central time, uh, usually it's on first, but this is, it's at third. Um, it's put out to everybody at the same time. And the first person that gets the order uh, to Pierce with a customer signed contract and a Firematic P O gets the truck. So uh, what we do is, if we have uh, somebody that's interested in it. I think multiple people set up, we all get emails, uh, drafted to Pierce to that one particular stock truck uh, person. Um, and then as fast as we can open the stock truck list, to grab the job number of what truck is now on it. And then we set that in and hold for the rest. Kind of a Wild West way of doing it. But that's cool words, that's where it happened.
So we weren't in a position to make a decision by Friday at one?
Yep.
We're in a position to make a decision next week or the week after, is that right?
More than one.
Is it gone Friday afternoon?
It'll be gone Friday at uh, one oh five.
Five questions, gentlemen. So, yes. And or part of the ice, is that a no fly after that?
No, we won't remove this, because the ice essentially is, is adding weight to the air. Uh, it it's so it's no longer seven fifty, it's five hundred. Um, I would say for ease of it, yes. Yeah, there there is crafts, just like the other gentleman was explaining, but nobody has been prepared. Uh, when it's, when it's that icy and that windy, consider it a five hundred, you just air on the same side, okay?
And I see this uh, operator's horse well. Is there, is there a uh, pre-vivid?
No, it's so close, if we're talking, the truck's not gonna be built for a year, hundred percent there would be. But being that the truck is going to start manufacturing in probably three months, four months. There's, there's not enough time here to get up out of it.
Still, any questions?
At this point, what could be changed in the design?
Um, not a lot, design, nothing, um, we could probably change the uh, color. And. Maybe a couple minor things, again, mirror the same answer he gave, that the fire is going back to engineering, absolutely not. So uh, it it's not, it doesn't mean you can't have it, uh, we have a manufacturing facility in both of our dealerships that we can make shelves trays. Uh, we can make B troughs, for example. Uh, we can change seating configurations, this has uh, you know, a a cabinet in the cab that we don't like. We just remove it and we we put seats there. Um, we have the ability to do all that stuff, so if something on there you really hate, you don't have to look at this, we can just about do everything that. That's usually they uh, they give us enough time to change the paint color. The other plate, most plate in this truck. Uh, this has a thirty-three five raver. And I think. Um, so we're rating, but let's see. Twenty-two eight. Twenty-two eight, yep. Twenty-two and fifty-five. Allowable weight for that equipment. Five hundred. Uh, let's see. They also have a collision mitigation system that comes uh, it's kind of standard in our trucks. Uh, it's free for the first, I believe, that's five years. Um, it is five years, but this is, uh, it's a little device that hangs in the front windshield. Uh, when the E master is turned on in the truck, it sends on a broadcast signal. Uh, when anybody with the Waze app downloaded on your phone or in your car. Enters that circle, they're notified that they're entering an emergency scene. Um, uh, again, to either slow down, pay attention, what have you, so again, it's just a collision mitigation there. Um, you actually can build upon that, that's kind of the standard, the bottom of the barrel operating that we get. Um, you can get a vehicle to vehicle um, system upgraded into that, even later on after market. Uh, where, and you can put it in police cars, ambulances, and every other piece of apparatus in your bank. Uh, you get an LED light on each A pillar of inside the vehicle. And so if another truck is approaching from your right hand side at an intersection, that right hand uh, LED light is actually blinking, communicating with each other. His left hand will be blinking, just to stop those intersection. Um, so like I said, just the standard one is free for five years, continue your truck the rest of its life, if you decide you don't want it, you want to back later, anything.
Is it for regular scheduled stock trucks?
Not a real big problem to me, so I can bring, I drive every quarter. Every, for seven, it's about every quarter, um, other trucks, there there are fewer in part two. So if you missed this one, the next one should be July, August.
And say you missed this one and the next one in July, August, what type of price increase would we be seeing between now and now? Uh, I would say probably in the crosswalk.
One point seven five percent pricing for this, one point five, so on and there, we don't know until. Thirty days before it hits, but. Cause we're doing one point, averaging one point five every quarter. This one already has the main first one. So August, it it's hard to say if it will have it in it. Yeah, I don't really know. She gets a little hint, that's what I got out of her for this one, she goes, it's just like job number, uh, what we're writing in quarter, quarter two, yada, yada. It's a duplicate of that truck, so that one there actually sold uh, six months ago, so this truck is a duplicate of that.
So, should the town become. Interested in any, in acquiring this truck or even the next quarter truck? How? First question. I was asking, and somebody else, what's the likelihood of us getting it versus the next department getting it? You say it's going five minutes.
It's, it's nothing more than uh, myself and Firematic doing everything they can to get you there first. Well, there's no better way that to do it, they, they, they won't, uh, the only time they'll show favoritism. Is when you're really in a jam, like if a fire truck burned up, and you're a Pierce customer, they will show favoritism. But for a regular purchase, everybody's always a even plan field, so we do, like I said, I get three or four guys set up. All watching that stock truck list, I have guys watching emails, I have guys refreshing our pulse file, which could be updated. Thirty seconds sooner than we get the email, and now I'm at an advantage to sneak hunting bastard. But everybody else does them on the same time.
Do you have any other questions? Because I'll ask, any of the persons or people in the audience have a specific question, so we'll solve it. You mentioned that because of the short timeframe, it wasn't. How much is a prepaid discount? Let's say they ordered this exact truck. This is the truck. Make sure all upfront, what kind of discount, who cares, it's not five percent. With that, the truck will be under one seven, that five percent. It's around about eighty thousand dollars, it's about, it sounds about right. So it's what?
Yeah, so you're, you're at. Six five nine. Select, select the question, that would then put us into the twenty twenty-six.
Mission of standards, yes. Then be getting a uh, twenty twenty-seven, and then. Uh, you'd be getting an X ten, which uh, you know, branded off, it enters the market.
So that would increase the price for.
No, this is twenty twenty-four. If you order anything today, it's twenty twenty-seven, was the time to build it. Uh, about thirty, depends on the depth of uh, spec, but thirty-eight months, thirty-eight to forty-five.
Okay, what I get from my question? Yeah, how many, how many year less is this, this pair is gonna be factory here?
Well, possibly. Maybe fourteen hundred trucks a year. And I would say probably. Twenty percent of those are air devices. I would say, I, it puts even closer to twenty-five percent, but they're not all the same one oh seven. Um, you know, the, the variable sand, yeah. That is there. And how about, you have eight of this pair, so. Um, contrast with eight or six, like, like, these ones, if they have lost it.
You can, you know.
Well, we, um, that, those, a lot of times I had their fleet customers, um, that, uh, we have plenty of cities that are, you know, a hundred percent Pierce, like, like you were explaining. Uh, and, and they all have their city spec, just like, just like you were saying. Um, they all, uh, seem to, every truck you build, you tweak the spec a little bit because there's something about it that you can make it a little bit better. Um, so no, there's, we don't have any, uh, like, set pricing that somebody in the big city gets, you know, any better discount. Often, like, for example, other big major cities that are very strict. First word. Yep, uh, Danbury is very close. Uh, yeah, there's a bunch of them out there, so, yep. Thank you, you're welcome.
Is there any care of some of this like this in services that they're going to get right now?
Oh, yes, I can send, uh, I can send the board a, a list of, of all of them, sold from state to state. So.
Well, I was gonna say, in the neighborhood of yeah, I bet it's hovering around one. Somewhere in there. Beacon Falls around would be the closest.
Sure, listen. The pumping testing each year, you said it's lifetime, what is the value of that for like?
Start off with three years. Ask right now, if you were to add it up, it's probably a six hundred dollar value with DOT inspection, federal and the, um, uh, test. Uh, but I don't know if that value is going to be, I mean, now it's just a six dollar a year.
And the, the monitoring for the code, you know, the, it's tied into you guys, you said that was twenty five hundred a year? Well, like your five, I, I, twenty twenty, you bet you will, and throw that in. Uh, it's to do your description.
For quite the first five years, have that attempt.
What else?
I, I have one question, I did another two on the. Just talking about, so I'm trying to, is there anything I can deduct out of this job to bring the price down a lot?
Um, great question, it would all depend on what's ordered for the truck. So let's say you had no intention of ever having a pulse system. Can we end that tank and save you twelve hundred bucks? The question, maybe if the tank hasn't been.
And other things on there, or, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what I would say take off of it, but if there is something else that we could save.
Uh, we have to take it case by case, there, there's not going to be too much that you can be able to take off, um, to really save, save a lot. Um, you know, if we're talking pump, I could say, hey, we bought a lot of it, that'll save five thousand dollars, give you yours, I'll put it out there. But you wouldn't want to do that. People on that area. Um, but no, it's, it's probably, this is, you're going to be getting just about what you're there. That's all it's got.
So if you ever take the twelve tank out, does that extend the, the, the ladders that would be in that space?
No, because they won't sign the tank, it's like.
That's just with figuring that out, what does that game get?
Right. That's up.
And the tool on, definitely, we just, they're away with that, that twenty five thousand dollars in tool on, and bought it towards ourselves. But that, that'd be something that we could, or within, and there's, that's a little.
See much dollar amount I had. Oh, sorry. I had some. There, there, you can, that, you can get the line item, we, we work those all times. Yep. Lover that, that big number.
Mr. Sh, should I revisit that? Okay.
Yes, I, I, I certainly, who knows, but I think just the, the time is just not.
Thank you, no, right, you're chatting.
Five questions, I, I just probably have anything else to add, I, I think we'll, we'll thank you for your hesitation.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, permission, we'll take another five minutes, just to stretch our length, and then we'll, we'll come back and, um, reconsider our course of action.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
So shorted, Jack, it's going to be a long meeting. All right, we'll reconvene the special meeting of the fire commission. And the next item on our agenda is the consideration of the two proposals for ladder truck for the Stone Hill Fire Department. Open up to the commissioners for discussion. Anybody?
Please start.
I'll start, all right.
All right, so obviously we heard from both sides of this street here. All those are, yes, it, it is a big difference in price, but we don't really have the full price now from E one with all the stuff that is supposed to be looking into. But right now, dollar for dollar, you're getting more truck with the Pierce warranty alone. You're getting more, a better warranty than you are with E one. E one is a fine truck, and I'm glad we went to see it yesterday.
Well, the difference in warranty, you know, this, uh, so we're all same page, what we're talking about, however, to make it effective.
Oh, half page numbers says continue. Oh, no, that's second to last page is the warranty from.
It's page thirty three, thirty three on E one. It looks like page thirteen on the, uh, on the medical spec.
The biggest, the biggest thing is the free pump test for the life of the truck and the DOT. That's the, I never heard of something specifically. It's lifetime.
He said twenty to about a six hundred dollar annual.
Correct. Right now, there you go.
Of course, increasing, of course. That doesn't speak to warranty.
On the warranty, you have more here, it's on. Brings fifty volt. Fifty volt, right? The axle, rear, the rear axle, warranty on the, on the tax four axle. And the, and the ABS, so you got ABS brake system on this, where you don't have ABS brake system on the E one, that's three year warranty on that.
Actually, it's heavier PRX.
Yeah, it's a heavier GBW, but not by much. Not by much. Anyhow. But it does come down to.
I just asked the question, I didn't say a lot of time, so.
I, I, I'm all people. That's my, that's my overall view of this. And now, the other problem is roll the dice come Friday morning, I don't know, how would you ever get that touch? If you have legal counsel looking at the contract, like.
And, and if you read it, as this one to the next, uh, stop production truck, so it's still in step one in five minutes.
Right.
Competing against every department in, in the United States. Don't get teed in. We're going to get, we're going to get, or is the E one, our name is on that truck right now for the next week. And then possible, if we show some interest of, of, we had extended.
Well. Between Friday and Wednesday. So we're, we're talking a, a year from July.
About adding years to every time. I'm also talking about five hundred thousand dollars.
I don't think it's that much. They came in at one point three, and he sat right here and said that, uh, that's not going to be a price. Graphics is forward, so much. That's maybe that thing for one, but.
So that year, that's about a hundred thousand. Now, you're right, he told me, uh, on the way out, with everything he asked about, I think he's going to get additional pricing on. He's a hundred percent confident that it was on one point four.
Just a little, like, safety features pierced. Oh, our major ones.
You're talking about.
The airbags and airbags, the, the, the seats that attract ABS, uh, they are ABS, stability control, which E one did that just ten, with ten people go great. Uh, this, this guy appears, it's just that that photo was totally false. Right? Yeah, now, yeah, the photo, everyone asks, is that a solar trip? You have to pull the shot. Yeah, sure. I don't know. I think in this case, at the end, more expensive truck would be less expensive.
Yeah, and that gap goes down to insignificant amount when you take out the longevity. Make respect to a lot of this truck ten, fifteen years, so you talk about the, uh, ladder inspection and DOT inspection fifteen years, now you're going to double that price. So, um, but the, um, one oh seven versus a hundred, nine feet is significant, that's almost a, a whole floor. The, um, other options, the safety, the ABS brakes versus not, the, um, airbags, I mean, we don't drive these trucks every day, we're not paid firemen. We're, we, um, we're not even doing it in our, um, overtime jobs, you could be driving just a car, now you're getting into a, you know, a thirty seven foot, uh, trunk in the weight. Um, it's a huge issue. Um, we're getting two thousand GPM pump versus a fifteen hundred GPM pump on E one. You're getting, um, a thousand feet of five inch versus eight hundred feet of, uh, five inch or, they have expected four inch. Um, yes, it's a gamble to try and get it, but to get the truck this year versus, uh, next year is a big difference. The, um, leveling process on the E one, I thought was, uh, covers some, where they have Thomas, which is for each individual, um, outrigger. Where it's a, I believe a button that we did the demo on, on the, um, the Pierce. And the significance I saw with that was when we went to Sandy Hook and the gentleman that is certified on that truck put out all the outriggers, went up onto the turntable to start, uh, flying that ladder, and it wouldn't go. But people have figured out right away how that truck was not able to fly. And, uh, Tony and myself were down on the ground, and I said, there's not a big on for this outrigger. So had to come back down, finish the process and go back up. So I could see that happening in the, um, the heat of a fire. So, um, I think, uh, usability is a, a big factor. Um, again, the, uh, the cab in the E one, uh, was not happy with the fold out seats. Um, it was very uncomfortable. There was no, um, support for your legs, it felt like it should fold out again. I think that was so short. Um, so it sounds like a model little thing, but when you add them all together, it becomes significant to me. And when I heard all of the safety issues, that I think we should take that into consideration. Um, for the amount of money that, uh, is the increase, you're, you're getting what you're paying as well, by the way. And I think we should buy the Pierce on that alone. So if I could, go ahead, couple of questions. First of all, I think you said you plan to keep the truck in the fifteen years, it helps a lot more than that. You must always, oh, I, I was, probably got our number, no, I, oh, okay, we helped out the last thirty years, yeah, okay. Um, so say we get into just a scenario, we, we say, yes, Pierce is the truck, Friday at one oh five, we don't get that truck. And we go around the next Wednesday, and the E one is there. Is the E one your choice, or does it wind up going back into the hopper for Pierce and trying lottery again in the next quarter?
Percent of this.
Right? Or God forbid, we wind up, you know, not winning any of those lotteries, you gotta buy the truck, you gotta, you gotta take a thirty five month. When you see him fall in your mind, um, or you just gotta have a ladder truck versus you gotta have a Pierce. And that may be our question. I personally would have, uh, ordered the truck versus because of the safety. To take the three year.
Also, you're going to keep them.
The thing that you are, are doing at least once you order, you're stopping that increase of the one and a quarter or or what he was coming up with as a price increase, that stops when the contract's signed. The only, uh, thing that is going to increase the price is material cost. If that material cost goes over a five percent increase, they eat up to five percent.
And they said. You have to think in mind, it's, we've been given a budget of one point eight maximum. And we're not to go over that, no matter what our course action is. If we miss this one twenty seven day on Friday, we're looking at the next Pierce truck coming up a quarter from now, that almost a two percent increase. I broke my math, but it probably puts us really close to that one point eight. And at which point are you?
And if you order it, you're going to definitely be over. If you get it by twenty six, approximately. So if we didn't get this E one, when's the next one coming out?
Does E one, as our name, I mean, we elected, we opted not to take it and take the gamble for Pierce, and we lose the Pierce. Wouldn't we be able to, uh, because if that's probably under the, uh, one point eight, I would, so the next truck would still be under the one eight threshold.
E one, yeah, I, I, I did not, I don't have any discussion on this, I think they have a regular stock production line, I did not.
I believe the same truck that he, he emailed me the first time in March is the same truck that we're talking about tonight. I do not believe that truck had a soul, but I'm not a, he, I.
I, I, I don't have the answer to that.
And, and can I touch base on something, Chief Baker saying Jeff Horn has five people working on this deal? That I, I'm pretty comfortable to say that if he says he's got five people doing it, and if I call him back right now and say, Jeff, you need to comply to the factory, sit there for when this comes out, he won't be the last one to even do that. So we, we are guaranteeing this truck.
But I don't think there's any possible way this commission can act on this particular truck for Friday. Even if we recommend it, we recommend it to the board of selectmen, who has to have a meeting, and then if they approve it, they have to recommend it to the board of finance and who has to have a meeting. I don't see how that's possible, but I'll defer to the selectmen for that to happen in the course of the next forty eight hours.
I agree with you, Captain, we have a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, uh, based on what happened here. Um, and by the way, I'm not saying we'll go with what you're saying, but.
So, so is a possibility.
Yeah, now, it, it'll be tight, it might be waiting for lottery to get it on Friday, but.
We're, we're, one can't find it after.
And, and as far as it goes, it's probably up to the board of selectmen to approve, obviously we'll talk to the folks at the board of finance, but the party has been put out. But I, I, I'm saying, so talk to the board of finance, it seems to be stupid, because it's a team effort here. I have one other question too, because I was a couple minutes late, I apologize if we change our venue. Uh, was anything discussed about the safety of the one? Doesn't attraction control, doesn't have airbags, does this have any kind of safety?
Stability.
It has stability control. Because no airbags could it have? They talked about the, the structural integrity cab, resting on its roof.
That's why I, I made the evaluation. It's a net brochure, it's higher than the, the N F A. So that's the fact. That's the gentleman from here.
So after one safety factor on, on the ladder. There was something, there was something on the cab, I forgot exactly what it was, I didn't write it down, but I, I read it here somewhere, I still. Don't be, offer protection on the cab, you know, whether. Unfortunately.
It's on the second page of them.
Look, says it's on the side of the table.
Wow.
Smoker's cap, yeah, but it actually gave a number in the spec of. But it says, uh, keep proof saying that we can't level the standard five times, the static roof load, but a good choice of full contact required. That's all he wants. So I, I think the major differences they were talking about are the, are the Pierce, if you thought correctly, I think you probably don't know this a lot, that is the, uh, that force suspensions, that, that, if, if, if.
The complete airbag system in the cab like your car would be correct, or in the one, et cetera, uh, that is trackable.
And the tensioners. And the tensioners on the seat belts, it's very important for safety. Um, even right down to that, um, weight alerting system when you're working out rather from outside. Cars that are approaching the scene, they're always slowed out. I don't, many people use that, but, um.
Here the other safety thing, you have the truck coming in a different direction. It's important.
Right. And that happens a lot with that two stations.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're comparing apples to apples, I mean, I don't think there's any way that's going to disagree that the, the Pierce is probably a better truck. The question I has is it five hundred thousand dollars probably. So the five hundred thousand dollars is halfway to the, to the spare truck we gotta buy.
Any other major acquisitions that that estimate for that?
I like that idea that the, uh, the template hold on in case of, uh, there was accident, damage, journey, uh, a fire banging into a building, uh, or through a window or.
Yeah, that sounded, yeah, it's a, if you're gonna do it versus the first three problems.
I think it's gonna take a little more abuse than the, uh.
I don't know. The ladder downtown is a nineteen seventy seven ladder.
Between the bucket. That's gonna take some of our abuse.
You have, you have trucks here on both sides of the districts that are that last thirty years plus. And that's why, because you took it nine, you made the right purchase decision, you got the correct trucks that last. You, you have, you have a, a significant difference in price against Pierce, E one, when you have a significant difference. In this constructional model on the Pierce versus the E one. Safety alone, it's safety alone. People inside that cat. How many accidents have you been treating? How many accidents have been occurring while engines in the career boat pilot here are responding to calls? They interact, rolling over or colliding each other. And one of the biggest things that saves them is the way the caps and everybody else are built, the seat belt systems.
The cow, uh, consideration areas with the, the Pierce, your plump parts will be much larger engine in that truck, which is gonna allow that truck to go a lot faster as well.
I think it's governed only up to sixty miles an hour, eighty five, five faster than sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, the bigger it's just gonna stop it, the jiggle it faster.
Yesterday, when we took that ride, and I, and I guess that E one was, it was a good truck. But when you draw it, you can tell it has a smaller motor, the way it's used, working, going up hills and stuff like that. Oh, and it was, and I asked the gentleman helping the motor wasn't, he wasn't sure. He said it's, it's a smaller motor. I went, okay, thank you.
I, 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 I. Yeah, but we don't know, I don't order that truck. I know, I don't know, but I said this, I mean, I. My truck, I drive, my other job has got a four hundred and seventy horse, four hundred and seventy five horse motor in it, and I bought eight thousand pound trailers. Eight thousand pound loads and. It's, it's sufficient, you know, four hundred and seventy five horse to eight thousand pounds. We're, we're talking about a truck that weighs around fifty four thousand pounds, fifty four, fifty seven. I forget the exact number, Chris. I, I think, you know, smaller motor, it is proposed in E one, it's certainly happened with. More discussion. Their general feeling is, well, we want to. By this debate, it's Tuesday night. Can you go to take list and explain?
Well, I, 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 today, I, I, but my, 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 my question, what happens if we don't get it Friday, we get E one? Are you gonna lock the town into? Something I always mentioned.
I don't have an answer to that question.
Well, I guess that would also contingent whether that same E one is going to be available. That could sound, that could be the other, another one becomes available because if we have it.
Yeah, we have several more days about a name on that truck. If we show significant interest in that truck, say, extend our.
I would say, you're telling me that he can have another truck available in July or August.
How much more? I mean, listen, I, I've been, I've been a state attorney, but let's say, I'm, I'm, I'm nature for sharing the account. Yeah, so you're calculated. And the thing that we get struggled with, you know, when I heard you guys were looking at the E one. For, for one point three, I was ecstatic. I was like, wow, like we've got some of this, we're not to the max number possible. And then it's the four hundred thousand dollars, which is a really big deal. Have you got four equipment to buy that's half of an engine or a third of an engine nowadays, right? But it really, you know, that we would get something that's a fire truck. E one's a good product. A lot of people use it to make your whole department side of the town. And, and unless I'm all about safety, I just barely can convince that a four hundred thousand dollar different now. We've been nice, tight, and that we, we can get that closer, but we do know it's probably gonna be one point four. And just, you know, cause stuff he said.
He was very comfortable.
Question, we know that if we do, if we do a prepayment, we actually will get something, which I just had, I just had a call with their VP. Uh, or he talked to the VP rather.
He also said, talked about the source while it was not included.
It is, well, it's not included.
It is on the Pierce without.
That might even things out again. At the, at the end of the day, we're talking about another four hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars, which needs a lot to the community. And, you know, getting all the extra, what they made, proceeds, bells and whistles. This is something that I think, if everybody supports fire, they'll hit you on. But, you know, we're getting, we're getting a lot of fixed car, all apart, right? We wanna do a lot of other things in the community. And for us to throw another four hundred thousand dollars out there for the brightest and best truck, it, it's something we have to sell to be in strength. And, and, and I can sell them with safety to some degree, right? We can. But I, you really gotta convince me that it makes a big difference. Like, we're talking about five inch, four inch, you'd put a couple on it, you could put five inches in this thing. But, and I, and I, I was talking to a few people, just wanna make sure you've looked at both of them thoroughly. But until tonight, you know, not as many questions, you have parents get a lot more than questions asked. Because maybe you guys are relating to our parents. I just wanna make sure you look at both of them together, you know? Because, yeah, questions.
Yeah, I also, it's not the first presentation.
I know, I'm starting to feel that wasn't that great. I haven't given you as much information here. So I didn't, didn't do the concerns in, look at what I've been talking about with the horse movement. It's really, why are we spending extra four thousand dollars a lot of money when, when E one makes a great product? And we got other engines to buy. I mean, and if you look at the last study, we got this on Saturday. Right? Yeah, so it's.
We've had it, we've had it, E one, just be putting it at this time. One, the previous engine six in downtown was an E one. Served this broker twenty years and it's thoroughly served the, you know, long range fire department in Stanford, because their first new piece of apparatus.
Yeah.
They bought it for pennies.
Don't panic. Don't, don't, everybody supports.
You saw that in the book. Yeah, what I said, I mean, if, if the money was no longer, if you were comparing how it's apples, I would agree that Pierce is probably a better truck. Is it five hundred thou, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars better? My personal opinion is no. If somebody wants to make a motion, you're gonna put it to a vote, I'll entertain that.
It sounds now, whether we propose this Pierce or E one, the, the town is siding on the E one just based on the dollar.
Oh, we, we as a board of selectmen have to, have to all get together for, onto board finance. I mean, I don't know. You know, the chairs in the room, I'm sure we're gonna have some discussion this, oh, yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, you, you, you guys vote for what you think is right, and then we'll, we'll figure out, but your vote matters, right? Unfortunately, as a group thing, I just want you to take into consideration the bottom of the future possible. But an apparatus has gone so far out of control by us, because it's, it's different because I think I've said this, you know, like. As a community, we're so grateful to have volunteers. I guess you could say was, you know, three to half, four, one thousand dollars a year of what we make for our department, right? So that's it. Unfortunately, apparatus is going so expensive that it's, it's harder to just expect that, but that's the price that we're asking. Again, we just have vertical only shaping costs. So I'm just trying to make sure everybody thinks about that. So Dan, if I can, you have a question to play out a scenario. Okay, the board votes who recommends the Pierce, we send it to you. Do you have them? You can say no. You can also say we want the E one instead, right? I mean, it's, it's up to the board at the end of the day. You can put the needle after we go for it. Yes, we can, as a board of selectmen, um, we can sit down and take the big representative by birthday. Obviously, we take everything we put in there seriously, right? Right? But as a, as a board, we're gonna look at it and make the best call. Um, that's why it was very interesting, the E one conversation, because then if we don't, we go for the Pierce, we don't get it. Are we wanting to move Pierce now? And now we're saying we're gonna, you know, we're having it on Pierce, which, which could go well over. I mean, I got my board, we're doing E one while it can. And that's gonna be the question that boards are gonna have to consider.
If we, if we miss the one, our Pierce, try to get on the one on the next quarter, which he said would Friday, right? If we miss the one on Friday, we get the next Pierce production truck the next quarter, which he said would be a one point, a one point seven five increase. That brings us to one point eight, one, one, one fifty, whole budget. That's my, my three path skills for today. Getting good. So I mean, we already got told you're not getting anything like point eight. So theoretically, you could try and get the one tomorrow. Okay. To try to get one point seven eight, and if we miss it, settle for the one for E one. If you put some for one thirty one, you know, my, she, she just go. So I can figure in the Pierce, other than the one that becomes available Friday, you know, for one point eight. After it goes out, it'll go one point eight.
Fifty eight, it's got sixty thousand dollars plus for a holder. I'm still left with. Grabbing that diet cell, chances couldn't happen. So, you know, if you're trying to sell a truck, you can post photos of.
I'm not completely convinced it's supposed to go over, I mean. There's a grass, oh, any construction action.
And he said that was a shot, could not have.
So you see there, something fellish in the war.
I think that actually happened, you see that somewhere else. Well, he, he did say, the, the person, the gentleman did say that at a certain angle, if he didn't have a counterweight because of the center of gravity, Pierce, it couldn't get forward.
And it's, it's also showing, they're saying a comparable truck, it's, it's a, it's a clip axle, you know, ladder truck versus the single axle. They compare the trucks. To me, I don't put a lot of weight into that. Make sure, like, same truck, it's, but, yeah.
I understand, but I just knew with sale itself, I said, I guess if you got a ladder bus in the front somewhere, because with the center of gravity, it's a whole different, okay, I don't know. I think so, my biggest concern is always, so what you think is right.
My biggest concerns are obviously, if you miss the one on Friday, you're not gonna touch another Pierce ladder truck from under one point eight, which is the budget click thing, right? Right? That's what, that's what the voters approved at, at the referendum. The town is not gonna go back and pull another referendum for an additional cost. And I think you gotta consider yourself lucky to have gotten eight to refer. So, so let's everybody start here. My thoughts, because the E one was certainly sound baffled, satisfactory for years to come.
So if we're locked into these two trucks, what is, what is, well, trying to get a safer truck? Guaranteed that the E one is available. Why can't we at least attempt to get the safer truck? We're all, we're all agreeing that it's a safer truck based on what it has for, um, specs. So if we go for it and don't get it, there's nothing lost as far as the E one, it's gonna be there.
And that's what I said, and the only argument I can make against that is four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, a lot of money. It is, it could be spent elsewhere, whether it's being spent towards the next fire truck online, whether it's being spent towards our local park improvements, whether it's being spent towards the town.
Well, we also have. Couldn't count back yet.
The town apple has a lot of major infrastructure needs.
But what we did with the fire infrastructure.
But look at just the fire, like, look at the, look at the report we had done, that, you know, whether, you know, some people don't put a lot of credence into that report. You know, other people do. Basically, that report says every truck in this town, in this town has been replaced, I think, in the next ten, fifteen years. Five hundred thousand dollars goes a long way to replacing the next truck, whatever that next truck may be.
Yeah, just had more people voted for the truck than for the town budget. So public is willing to spend the money for the truck. And my opinion. By the way, I'll, I'll, I'll. I'll put you think.
Okay, I gotta, we gotta have a pick here. Uh, I think the Pierce is very compelling from safety standpoint, but it's got a lot of I A features, right? More, more than you've ever seen in a fire truck before, right? They're, they're breaking new ground with that. Um, and it comes down to what Fred said, is it four hundred thousand dollars with better features? Right? Which is half a truck.
I don't think it's four hundred thousand. I think it's the E one is a simple dump. It's gonna be two fifty, three hundred. It's a lot of money on taxpayer. My taxes are too high, a lot of camera record. But I think, I don't know, it's the safety. So if we need a motion, I'll make a motion for try for E one. It's, I'll be at it. The, the period, they tried for the Pierce and it, it can't be obtained by the Pierce wreck on Friday. We go E one, it's got to be for another week. Second ambush. All right, so we have a motion, try to obtain the Pierce apparatus that becomes available Friday at one P M. If we fail to enter into contract with the truck, we will try to attract a contract with the E one prior to next Wednesday. My motion was seconded by Tony. I understand the correct. If he's been written down, okay, is, is there, if the Sears can't get it, uh, that, that contract. Pierce is gonna, if that truck will deliver that, we get the name on it Friday. We get our name on the truck by Friday. And we have a second, is there any discussion on that?
I have one question. Now, Doug, the last time the truck came available, for some reason, it was delayed. Is that a possibility?
I, I can ask, even you else, like I told, told you the last time, you could run the thing. So there's some, that's what she had to say that truck sold.
Could imagine a motion to be, you'll be able to obtain the Pierce price by Friday.
So, so we have a discussion on this one truck. If this one truck is delayed availability, but we still keep the motion, try and attempt to get this truck.
Till the next Wednesday, we'll put this E one. I'm in the motion.
That's the best we can.
Excellent case.
At the fourth quarter, you can second.
That's second, you know, that. Any other discussion? No further discussion.
We got a vote on.
Auto motion as presented. All those are favorite. I, I, opposed. Motion carries three, two.
Those are your party. Our course.
Not being sad, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So move. Second, closed, credit room.
Aye.
Closed. So carry.